I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM, and we'll start out with public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we will move on to item number four, approved minutes from the December 5th, 2017, regular meeting to have a motion to do so. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Len, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero one, and please note Trish's abstention. Okay, under First Selectman's report, I just want to give an update of our budget numbers as they currently stand. As of today, the town of Seymour has been cut $1,931, or excuse me, $1,931,611. We have taken steps, as we've talked about over the last couple of meetings, to close that shortfall. The shortfall is down to $289,752. We signed off on all of the bond restructuring yesterday, all that was closed, so that brought an additional $610,000 of revenue into the town. The governor will be called, or the legislature will be coming back into session after the first of the year. There's a projected $208 million shortfall in the budget, and he has recommended a cut of $100 million to municipalities, based on previous formulas. That could be anywhere from $600,000 to $800,000 of additional cuts to the town of Seymour, if everything holds the same like last time. So, our deficit could increase from that roughly $300,000 up to over a million again. I'll be meeting again tomorrow with the finance team, we're working on worst-case scenario. Tomorrow, we'll actually be bringing in all the department heads, discuss that with them. But the reality is that the cuts are going to carry through to the next fiscal year for the state, so the projections of money that we received with the budget that was produced just five short weeks ago, I think are completely out the window. So, you know, we have shortfalls in our fiscal year, '19 budget, depending on the scenario that we use, anywhere from $500,000 to about 1.7 million. So, we'll come up with a bunch of different scenarios, and those will all be presented during January. So, that's kind of where we stand with regards to the budget. So, with that, we'll move on to item number six, discussion with Strategic Planning Committee. And with that, we will turn it over to tonight's presenter. They're all looking at each other, Bruce Baker. Well, Don was looking right, and Kathy was looking left, so you're the guy in the middle. Make sure you talk into the microphone. If not, my mom will call you at your house. These are fancy. This is fancy. Listen, you can take it off and go mobile. You'd be like a rapper.
All right, good evening, everyone. For the record, Donald Smith Jr., Vice Chairman of the Strategic Plan Committee, and most of the members of our Strategic Plan Committee are here with us. Obviously, the two big bookends at the head table here, Trish and Stefan.
That can't be seen by the camera. Camera's not moving.
Also with us Cory Marquetti and Kathy, relic? And our returning member, Bruce Baker, recently reappointed and returning to the committee. We're looking forward to having Bruce back as a guiding hand for us. I would also want to take just a minute to recognize and thank Jen Magri and Dr. Jeff Guszitschlager, new Director of NVHD and former members of the Strategic Plan Committee for their years of service and help. As you are aware, since being established in November of 2013, the Strategic Plan Committee has developed a strategic 10-year, 10-year strategic plan that has produced many benefits to date, most notably increasing and maintaining our bond rating while other communities are being downgraded, establishment of an OPEB trust account, stabilization of our long-term finances, which has allowed us to absorb a pretty significant reduction in state aid, as Kurt just indicated, not sure that you can get to covering all of it, but we've done a good job at trying to buffer that reduction without adverse tax consequences. And the town has received another certificate of achievement for excellence in financial award, financial reporting award, I think that's what, a third or fourth?
Third.
Third? This year after Doug submitted the CAFER, which is our comprehensive annual financial report to the government finance offices. Some of the highlights of the plan that I've just passed out to you, and what we've been working on since the last March, is that our communication committee, namely Cory and Kathy, have given our plan a new look, and with their iconography, seems to have given it a little bit of a better read, and makes it a little softer on the eye. We have updated and consolidated the contents of the plan, and we've added an introduction that defines the overview, the process, and the basic structure of the plan. We've met with the First Selectman, received his updates, will be incorporating his latest update into our next revision after the first of the year. We've met with the Board of Education and have gotten the support of the Board Chair and obviously former Strategic Planning Committee Member Jen Magri, the Board of Education and the new superintendent, and they are preparing a three-year strategic plan covering the education side for inclusion into this plan. What we're told is that a three-year plan is standard in the educational world, and five is, five-year plan is outside in 10 years, not even, not even close. And then we're working with Rob Dyer to try and keep the technology section of the plan up to where he is. He's just completely dusted what we had in the plan and just keeps moving ahead, so we're just trying to play catch-up with Rob at this point. Basically, at this point, the plan is essentially complete, and we're now going to be transitioning to maintaining and updating the plan rather than expanding it any further, you know, with the exception of the Board of Ed. We'll be looking into making the planning process itself sustainable with policies and procedures for how and when to conduct future interviews, update a section, or recommend that the process wholesale be started all over again. And this will guide future iterations of the plan. We'll obviously continue our semi-annual updates with the First Selectman, and we will be communicating the plan to the public via videos, brochures, public meetings, with the goal being of making the plan more tangible to those that affect, that it affects the most, which is obviously our taxpayers. Due to the steps that we've had to take to address the state's financial condition, we'll be meeting with the town's financial attorneys on recommending, on recommendations on how to update the fund balance guidelines that are in the plan. We need to tweak some language so that it's clear or less clear, depending on how you want to look at it. So, we're going to be looking at that, and then we'll have, bring those recommendations forward. And then lastly, on our horizon is also interviewing the town historian, and then any other new department heads that may be hired. At this point, if there are any questions, if I can answer them, or if there are any chairs.
Okay, so any questions? Everyone just wants to fire away to Don?
Hey, Don, just, I'm going through this now, I haven't seen it yet. I apologize for not going ahead, going through it ahead of time before tonight, it's pretty fresh. Okay, I don't feel so bad now. But I just want to just check in and see what the Strategic Planning Committee thought about some of the things that are being done in some of the other towns, or at least being talked about with regard to regionalization. I know it's something that Kurt has tried to do, to a point, obviously, and, you know, I was just curious to see what your group thought about those types of concepts moving forward, given the budget constriction at the state level.
There are sections, or there is a section in the plan on regionalization, and some efforts to improve that throughout the Valley towns. So, we do have an open eye to that.
Sure.
Yeah, trying to share the services where possible, and recommend that that be explored further, certainly.
Okay, so it's kind of early stages, conceptual.
And you'll see with the priority column, I think that's, some of those are pushed out a little bit along the distance.
A lot of that is inefficient, effective local government.
Yep.
And partly in the financial section.
Thank you.
And the iconography, the gold, the tan, is the community sections, basically pertaining to community health. Green, obviously your financial sections, and the blue, related to local government, cost of transportation. It makes a lot of the, kind of skim through the plan.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? I mean, the one thing I can say, at our last presentation to S&amp;P, they specifically referred back to the strategic plan. We had made mention of it in the two previous times we'd gone before them, so they are aware of it, and it certainly is a good thing for us to have, particularly when we are showing progress in a lot of the areas. So, that's something that, one of the things S&amp;P talks about is the type of management that you have in place, that it shouldn't be about a person, but it should be about a way of doing business. So, they're very happy to have this, this plan. So, it's certainly a great thing that you guys have all taken on and put in place in something that we're going to continue to move forward with, constantly update, and hold people accountable for. So, it's certainly a good tool for us to have, as I said.
It's certainly a living, working document, and not one that's going to be stagnant, not updated, with what changing, conditions changing needs.
As a member of the committee, I just want to make a comment. This team's worked very hard, very well together, and I'm also extremely happy that the town employees have been working together to consolidate services between the Board of Ed and the town, because that was one of our primary goals, and we're really moving toward that. We have some things working very well already, because it is a little redundant to be having the Board of Ed and the town, in such a small town, pay for two different positions or the same kind of services separately, because we are one community. That said, as Don had mentioned, the plan itself, I think when the municipal part was done, is ready for formal approval from the Selectmen. Not that they, we, there hasn't been support for the plan throughout, but I think the, at the end, when we were finished, the Selectmen were going to agree to incorporate it as a formal document for the town. And we can't control the Board of Ed piece, so we didn't know what your thoughts, Kurt, were on going forward with that.
Oh, if you, I don't think there would be any issue having that done. So, why don't we do this, why don't we have, give everybody an opportunity to review it? And then what we'll do is, we will put it on the agenda for our second meeting in January.
Okay.
I just want to give it with the holidays, and, you know, it's kind of a quick turnaround time for our board meetings, we meet on January 2nd. So, why don't we say on the 16th, which is our second meeting in January, we can have that added to the agenda, we can have a discussion about that, and the board can formally adopt the plan. If everybody's comfortable with that?
Sure.
Done, it works, sure. Everybody? Anything else, any other comments? Yeah?
And we wanted to give a quick message for our senior members.
Oh, a thumbs up, okay. So, but again, thank you very much to the five, four of you, and then to Trish and Stefan as well.
And her last member, Rory, is celebrating.
It's his birthday today, celebrating his birthday. But thank you for all the hard work and effort, I know this wasn't an easy task. You put a lot of work into it, it's certainly appreciated, and this is a document, I think, that's going to go on for many, many years, and that's a credit to the work that you've put in. So, thank you for all that you have done. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, though. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number seven, appointments. We have two appointments this evening. Excuse me, the first appointment is tied to a piece of correspondence that we'll get to later on, but it's Tom Amy, Board of Fire Commissioners, it's a new appointment, it's a three-year term, it expires on 12/20/2021.
Summer.
Actually, 20/20, excuse me. Not 20/21, 20/20, so three years from today. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Nafis and Young, WPCA Engineers, it's a reappointment, it's a two-year term, it expires December 3rd, 2019. Motion by Len, second by Anne Marie, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Item number eight, tax refunds and abatements. You have the report in front of you from Sue Bolin in our Tax Collector's office, and you can see the total amount is $2,881.65. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Tax Collector's report as presented. Motion by Stefan, second by Len, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Item number nine is transfers, you were handed out a transfer this evening, and I apologize for the lateness of this, but this is something that we just literally decided on this morning. And you also will have a letter from Rob Dyer, who is the Director of Technology for the town of Seymour. I'm going to read this into the records so we have it. It's an email from Rob to myself, the subject is "Next Generation Firewall." It says, "Hi Kurt, we recently had a network security audit performed by Advanced Corporate Networking. They put Palo Alto's Next Generation Firewall behind our current firewall. This means that anything picked up by the Palo Alto was missed by our current firewall and let through. The results of this security audit were both typical and frightening. They are typically, they are typical because although we are using the current gold standard, which is the Cisco Adaptive Security appliance, it is old technology unable, and unable to keep up with the evolving threats that have recently taken Equifax, Target, and many other big names by surprise. The newer generation firewalls such as Palo Alto Solutions are connected to a cloud server that is constantly updating the threat database in real time. In addition, it expects actual traffic and makes sure that the traffic is legitimate before allowing it through, which greatly improves security over the current model of our port-based security. Our current solution only receives updates randomly every year or two, and only when we manually apply them. Although there is a cost associated with implementing this new firewall upfront, as well as on a subscription basis, I believe the reoccurring costs can be offset by eliminating the town's separate connection to the Internet and instead integrating the town with the school's existing Internet connection. Please let me know if you have any further questions. Thanks, Rob." Again, signed off by Rob Dyer. Okay, so the total cost, right now, again, I'll refer you to the Transfer Request Control Number One, the total amount is $30,300, of which $20,400 is for software, $9,900 is for hardware. The reoccurring costs that we will see each year, in total, between the town and the Board of Education, is about $8,000 total. The town being able to eliminate its Internet connection and jump on with the Board of Education will save us a little over $5,000 a year, so the net cost to the town for this improved service is going to be in the neighborhood of $26,000 or $27,000 a year. It's also going to include the speed the town has from, oh man, 100-something to a gigabyte, so our speed, yeah, the speed on the town side is going to be improved 10 times. So, I think I kind of butchered that one, but, so, and we're getting tremendous value. To Rob's point, they, when they put this appliance behind our Cisco Firewall, the things that it caught would shock you. Things that should not be getting through that are rolling through. This, and I saw a demonstration from the Palo Alto folks, when a threat comes through, it's immediately shot up into the cloud, and less than a minute, a response comes back from the cloud, and it's either denied or allowed to pass through. If it's a threat, the threat goes into the cloud, it's immediately shot through the entire system, and shot back down to all the systems across the world that have it. So, these things are constant, it's constantly being updated, it's basic, what's it, virtual intelligence, I guess they call it, it's extremely high-tech, but it's going to keep us very, very safe. If you compare that to the potential risk, and I'm sure Rich could talk about this, of our data getting stolen, getting broken into, you know, paying an extra $2,000 a year is certainly worth it. Again, this brings us one more step closer to a true town-wide IT department, where we're now running everything through one essentially Internet trunk. You know, it's improved security, it's improved speed for the town. You know, Rob does have one tiny concern with regards to speed, on the days that the high school does their testing, that there's such a volume that goes through because of the kids doing everything online, the amount of data, that it could potentially slow the town side down a little bit.
Right, because there's not enough bandwidth, but that's the way, that's the deal.
Right, but it's only, like I said, it's two days max, Rob is projecting. His concern, obviously, is with the PD, but, you know, if we alert the PD, everybody knows what's going on, making sure that they're not downloading any large files, doing any type of transfers, anything like that. He doesn't foresee any issues. And, you know, when we talked a little bit with the strategic plan, Trish, or Len, you asked a question about regionalization. What we've been able to accomplish just by combining with the Board of Education on the town side with technology is incredible. We're spending in total probably about $8,000 more than this process started, and I can tell you, our technology on the town side is head and shoulders and light-years where it was just four short years ago. So, the impact that this decision has made has been a tremendous benefit to the municipal side, and at the same time, it's also been a benefit to the Board of Education side, because we were able to bring, or take a part-time person, make it a full-time person with regards to support. That person spends predominantly more time on the Board of Education side, obviously, but it's just having more hands on deck to keep our technology up and running, and the fact that we are becoming more of a paperless operation, there's a greater need for support and protection and speed and everything else. So, I think this transfer is something that is an absolute must for the town. Rob had to have, had to see his doctor tonight, so he was unable to be here, and I didn't obviously want him to cancel his appointment, but he is more than willing to come to our next Board of Select meeting, if anybody has interest, and talk a little bit about this specifically. This transfer will go to the Board of Finance for their meeting next Thursday, and if it's approved by them, then the PO will be cut on Friday, and we'll have this in early January up and running. So, any questions on that? I'll do my best to answer any non-technical questions.
Please, Ray, go.
No, we're pretty good?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, then I'll entertain a motion that we approve Control, hold on, I'm going to read it in, Control Number One, in the amount of $30,300, which is coming from fund balance and being transferred into software, $20,400, and hardware, $9,900. Motion by Trish, second by Len, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, chair votes aye, motion passes six zero, or seven zero, excuse me, thank you, I'm wrong. Okay, item number 10 is correspondence. We have the check runs, and then we have a letter from Great Hill Hose, and I'll just read that into the record, because it's something we took action on. It says, "Dear Selectman Miller, during the recent December meeting of the Great Hill Hose Company, Thomas Amy, of 50, Laurel Lane, was selected for appointment to the Board of Fire Commissioners. This position up for reappointment is currently held by Dan Zanuski." And it's signed off by Jeff Cronin Company, Secretary of Great Hill Hose Company. Okay, so that covers correspondence. With that, we will move on to item number 11, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment. We'll move on to Selectman's public comment. Um, we'll start with you.
Sure, just a couple of things about the Fire Department. I just want to commend them again for getting all the popcorn balls out. That's always a great time, I remember when I was a little kid, that, I used to love that day, and it was still fun to watch them go around town. And also, I had the pleasure to, once again, attend the Great Hill Fire Company's annual holiday party last night. Food was great, company was great, good time all around, just Merry Christmas, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Karen?
I too would like to thank the firemen for, for passing out treats to the kids. I know when my kids were small, they used to love it, you hear the siren coming down the street, and we'd run, you know, not even grab a coat, just run outside and make sure they get out there and get some goodies, so I appreciate it still, even though I don't have anybody at home. One of my comments is a question. I noticed on the day that we continued mourning the disaster at Newtown, that not all public buildings here in Seymour had their flags lowered to have staff, and I wondered, is that something that is directed by the Board of Select, by the First Selectman's office, or is that something that each agency which has a facility with a flag decides for itself?
The only person that could deem the flags raised or lowered is the Governor. The Governor passed that order. The American Legion actually handles the raising and lowering of the flags for the town, so if they, a building was missed, I wasn't aware of it, so we'd have to bring that to the attention of that building. But generally, everyone works in connection together, so if one was missed, it was just an oversight, yeah. But, I mean, if you let me know which building it was, I can reach out to them and just see if they missed it, or, yeah.
Okay, and I'd also like to question, we had a prominent citizen raise the issue of the faded pink and blue lines at our last meeting. I wondered if there is any status report on whether those lines will be repainted yellow for safety reasons in the near future.
Uh, I don't have an update on that tonight.
I do.
Oh.
Sorry. It was brought up at our Public Works meeting, I spoke to Tony and the crew about it. The painting of the line is done on Mountain Road, should have been done by the paving contractor, that was their responsibility, but right now, they can't really paint because of the snow and the ice was on the ground, so they are looking at reflective flags to put on there. They are looking at some sort of way to be able to still recognize our Fire Department, our EMS, and our Police Department, as well as pay tribute to those with breast cancer for having the pink stripe, by applying some sort of reflective coating on top of that stripe, or even reflective flags like they use on the highway. So, they are looking into it, just right now, they can't do it because of the weather.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there we go. Thank you, Anne Marie.
Lastly, I'd also like to request that we honor the memory of a very prominent resident of Seymour, Pauline Lounsbury, who served this town for, I, I've lost track how many years. She was a reporter for the Sentinel, she was a good friend to this town, covering civic meetings and educational meetings, Board of Ed meetings, and activities at the high school. I was unaware when she passed, I found out a couple of weeks later.
I didn't realize she did, I didn't realize she passed away.
She, she passed about a month ago.
I wasn't aware of that.
And, well, there were no services or anything, it was a very private family, but she, she has passed, and I would ask that we pause for a moment to honor her memory.
Sure. I, I think that's something, Karen, that's worthy of doing now, if that's okay?
Yes.
So, if we can all stand for just a moment of silence for Pauline, please? So, if we can all stand for just a moment of silence for Pauline, please? Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, Karen.
Thank you.
All set, Karen?
Yeah.
Excellent. Len?
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's it.
Thank you, Al.
Just wanted to give kudos to the middle school folks and the kids at the winter concert a week ago. Tonight was fantastic. They always do a great job with that. It's a lot of fun, and that's it. Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and have a safe and happy new year.
Thank you, Al. Anne Marie?
Just to go along with the popcorn sundae, I'm not sure if everybody knew, but also on Saturday, the Fire Departments went out and delivered Christmas presents to those residents that signed up and purchased the gift to have, sans to bring it to their kids. So, it was really good. It was the first year it was done, so I was really happy about that. That was really nice of our Fire Department getting involved in that as well. It was also nice to see them at popcorn sundae, and I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Trish, your first ever.
I also, I also had the opportunity and pleasure to attend Great Hill's Holiday Dinner last night. Very appreciative that, appreciative that they invited us and Stefan and I were able to attend. Also, earlier in the month, I represented the Board of Selectmen at the Land Trust event. Thanks for putting me on the spot there, because I wasn't aware I was making a speech, but it went clicking well.
It was your husband, not me.
And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you very much. Okay. Rich, anything we've missed? Need to go back over? No? Leanna, anything? No? Okay. Just on behalf of myself, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you for all of your hard work and effort throughout the year. Trish, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Your first official meeting, so we're certainly glad to have you. We'll miss Nicole, but we're glad to have you onboard. Strategic Planning Committee, thank you for all your hard work and effort again.
Thank you.
And Fred, thank you for always being our public at our meetings. We very much appreciate that, so. So, with that, I will...
I'm making a motion adjourned.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Mark the meeting closed at 7:36 PM. Mary...